This is our first meeting. The staff and the ladies.
The fire, the night takes a mark, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, the peaceful, liberty, and justice for all.
Please raise your hand for honor our fallen service men and women, as well as the recent passing of firefighter Joseph A. Harvey. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to begin the next meeting with the appointment of Rodolfo Solomonte, as a new police officer of the Garden City Police Department. Mr. Solomonte, would you please stand here? Inspector Braun would like to say a few words.
We have with us tonight his trainee, Rodolfo Solomonte. He was born in Queens, as I just found out every day where I was born myself, and then grew up in Levittown. He attended St. Mary's High School and graduated from Island Trees High School in 2010. After high school, he played professional hockey in the Ontario Hockey League and participated in the Islanders Rookie Camp in 2010. I won't hold that against you, let's go, interest? After five years in professional hockey, he attended and graduated NASA Community College. While there, he also began coaching Tier One, Under Sixteen, and Under Eighteen hockey for the PAL Junior Islanders. He held his position for six years while pursuing a career in law enforcement. He is currently assigned to the NASA County Police Academy. Ladies and gentlemen, Rodolfo Solomonte.
Chief Inspector Solomonte, would you please stand up?
Yes.
Chief Mr. Brown. Chief, has a brief. Where's your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
What's your name?
Rodolfo Solomonte.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the City of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer of the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police officer of the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As the powers vested in me as mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you newly appointed. Your breath, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Stay up there for some pictures.
Families can come up too.
You take that and then walk forward. You got that?
Yeah.
Why should we come up, of course? Families invited.
Families invited.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Now look up to the other.
I'm straight.
Hold on.
Did you got it?
Yep.
You sure?
Wow.
Can I make a picture?
Good.
I know you're good.
We're getting started, Wolf. Fashion.
There you go.
Fashion.
Send them to Commissioner.
Are you just, you, I usually send them to Jean.
Okay. This career sentence. Well, send them to Commissioner to Jean and.
Yeah.
At least that.
Let's continue our meeting this evening, beginning with Inspector Braun.
The police department has no items on tonight's agenda, however, Commissioner Jackson regrets not being able to attend and wanted me to cover a couple of things. Remind us that there are still burglaries and motor thefts occurring throughout the county. And we've had a long scold of order recently, which was recovered in Virginia. If ever, just please remain vigilant, lock your cars, remove your fobs. As far as the house is used lighting and alarms regularly, no matter how short you're going to be out of the house. We do have extra holiday patrols, plainclothes officers in the business districts, and DWI patrols as well. So everybody, hopefully, will have a safe and happy holiday season. Finally, we want to thank the community for one of the best toy collections we've had for Toys for Tots. Over eight boxes full of new toys were collected. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Prime.
We're getting mayor, trustees. The Fire Department has nothing formal on the agenda. I'll actually provide a few updates to everybody. So our new engine is coming along nicely. We're actually entering the final stages of design and we should be able to go out to the vendor within the next month or so. So we'd like to present that to the board with the final design so everyone can see what's going on there. The training site is moving along nicely. We're in the planning stages there. We'd like to thank John Veroni for his incredible work on that. So that should again be brought to the board shortly. And then for the residents, our operation center is currently going on this week. Unfortunately, due to tonight's weather, we've had to postpone tonight's zone. So we'll be operating two zones tomorrow. So please use the GPS tracker to keep an eye on Santa. And it is the holiday season, so we do wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season, as well as a safe one. So please visit our social media sites for various holiday safety tips. And please, if there's any issues, don't be embarrassed, call Fire Department. Have any questions anyone may have?
Chief Fern, I understand that the timeline for heading to new engines, which we thought might be two to three years, is now maybe fourteen months. Is that correct?
Yes, with the community's surge over the past couple of months and meeting with numerous vendors, the one that they've decided to go with and narrow down has basically come out where they're promising it's going to be thirteen, fourteen months from when we sign off on the dotted line. So considering we're looking at anywhere from two to three years, fourteen months is something we'll greatly take.
Yeah. And also you might just, for those that aren't aware, are you going to have the same equipment on each, on each engine so that you can, it eases the training on anything? And also anyone from the Fire Department, any point in the village can just jump on?
Yes, so we're looking to standardize apparatus. This one will be the first, and then the template per setting going forward. So then all the rigs are standardized across the board, which just eases in terms of driver training qualification, familiarization with apparatus, or any member who lives on, regardless of whether they live in town, can go to anywhere and know exactly where everything's laid out. So, you know, progress, I'll say.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Just one of the outcomes of the Fire Safety Committee, the training center is a process whereby not only do the firefighters in the village participate, but as well as those from the surrounding communities that come on mutual aid would likewise train. And it is important that when you fight a fire, there's a lot of muscle memory that goes in, that you don't think, you react, and you have to move quickly. Hence the reason for the needed training. Also, part of the protocols that were discussed with the chiefs that are in the process of being implemented is the reaction when a signal tank, in which you will wind up having an engine company likewise respond. You can fill us in better on that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So to your point, Commissioner, what we've done is we've just upgraded our mutually policy. There's been a set mutually plan within our department for decades now. Again, the fire service is, and emergency services, always adapting and evolving. What we've done is on any general alarm, we've pushed up our mutually response. So if we get a general alarm within the village and odor of smoke, someone's calling up and saying, "My house is on fire", instead of waiting for someone to get there and confirm it, we're toning out our mutually departments that would respond to that scene if we got there and transmitted a working fire on the initial tone out. So that way we're not delaying any resources and, you know, everyone gets there quicker. Because there's a setting in the fire service, we always turn them around. So we'd rather have them toned out initially with us. And if we get there and confirm it's nothing, we could easily turn them back away. But if not, after we did actually use a working fire or something where we needed additional manpower, we have those resources coming quicker.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. Let's move on. Village Treasurer Mary Wu, she is on.
Yes, she's on too.
Yes, this is Mayor Tucksey. On Saturday, there's a couple of items. Item number one, transfer funds $5,000 to your property to transfer to the finance maintenance of software account. This is to fund the parking permit system changes to allow for the office parking that the board has authorized. There's a statement of work, of work from our vendor attached to the agenda document. So that work can proceed once the board recognizes its work. Items being seen were requested by the village administrator and will go into more detail on those items later on. Item number two on your agenda is a request to write off balances of uncollectible accounts. The first item is a request to write off $197.32 since that was a result of a damage to the traffic sign. This amount was deemed uncollectible and the legal committee is recommending to write off this balance. It would cost more to pursue this rather than write it off. Item, the second item, is a write off of 264 hours and 72 cents. This reference is at the balance due on the invoice that was sent out. The invoice total was $3,725.46. This was, and this request is to the board to accept a settlement tax of $3,450.34. The third item is a request to write off $11,639.65. This was also down to Village Light Home and the bus shelter. And this amount is the balance due on the $13,643.25 invoice. This amount was requested by Village Council and the legal committee to accept the settlement tax of $4,330.34. The documents related to these write offs are attached to the board documents. Item number three is a request to the Department of Emergency and Homeland Security to hold a recent state hearing on February 21st, 2023, between the hours of 5:30 through 9:30 p.m. This is also the night of awarding. And this is the annual recent state hearing. Item number four is for the village to accept the deferred compensation audit report. The village has self admitted deferred compensation plan report as opposed to being part of the New York State deferred compensation plan. As a result, New York State requires that the village perform an annual independent audit of the financial statements of the plan and provide that audit report to the state on an annual basis. The report to the board was completed, it was a true audit, and so we're just requesting that the board accept the report when it comes down to New York State. And those are the only items on the agenda for tonight. Any questions?
Questions move on? No questions?
Yes, question.
Irene?
Yes?
Can you go with the large? I don't really care about the $197, the $264, two rials. Can you give more color on the $11,000?
Irene, if you want, I'll respond to that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Basically what happened is there was a motor vehicle accident in which the driver and the vehicle had limited coverage. Accordingly, when you have a situation with limited coverage, there would be a tender of the policy. The tender of the policy is to all of the affected claims. And then there would be an apportionment with regard to how much the policy is vis a vis the amount of the damages. Unfortunately, in this particular case, there was a sufficient amount and insufficient amount of coverage to make everybody whole and therefore there was a proportionate acceptance by all of the parties of what was the coverage and then was distributed accordingly. Based on the vehicle and the rest of the circumstances, the ability to continue with litigation to get a full recovery was not valid.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other comments? Thank you, Irene. Next is building superintendent Giuseppe Giannella. Is that still in the zone?
Yes, may I have any?
Yes.
Yes, relating to Mayor and Board trustees. Do you, Building Department, does have anything on the formal agenda? Board members have any questions the board may have for the Building Department?
Do you have any update, Giuseppe, on projects you're working on?
Yes, I do, may I have a minute? I'd like to board with a few projects. Ralph can update you on a few others, but I'd like to update the board with the Edgar White House. It's scheduled for three, four, two, tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m. With GPS architects and engineers to discuss the project and discuss what we're forward on, discuss the schedules and the design for that project. The same calls mean building. I had a few phone calls, conversations with Mr. Westman. He's still preparing his schedule with his team, which is his architects and engineers and testing company. He's going to collaborate all that information and schedule meeting with us once he has that. There's also a fourth wall construction project. The contractor has mobilized. The work is in progress at this time, depending the weather. The casino upgrades. We've had multiple conversations with the casino. There were what, three upgrades to that building? One of them being the drainage project, one of the seconds being the roof, and the third being the boiler and exhaust system. I spoke with Mike Stegler, the casino architect, just the other day. And he mentioned that they did go out the bid for the drainage portion, because that's the portion they want to handle first. And his bids came out very hot. He decided to break that project in two phases by handling the back of the building, the drainage, and then the front of the building drainage. It's going to require some drywall on this side of the building. The back of the building is going to require an upgrade on patio facility in the back of it. There is, they were seeing a little water in the basement and that's going to help the drainage of any water coming into the basement and the actual water drain into the course. So that's the update for that. Then Michael also mentioned that they're going to provide drainage first and I think they'll talk about the other two projects, which is going to be the roofing and the HVAC. The log barry project is moving on very well. Still, the completion date, end of February, March. So that's a lot of the area. The Village Hall project, the repointing and parapet and cleaning of the stones is in progress right now. It should take about two weeks, but he contracted to do that. And then the second part of that project is the roofing, the flat roof on the north side. We got some major leaks on the inside of the second floor building and this roof is going to help to eliminate all that, all that we give on the second floor. The other part of the Village Hall construction downstairs on the first floor, that's well underway. The contractor completed a demo last week and started constructing the new walls of the office spaces. He's all, the HVAC contract will be starting hopefully next week with his electrician and starting to provide ductwork for the new HVAC system. And that's all I have. Mayor Ralph can actually come in on any of these items and the other outstanding projects that you may ask for. Thank you.
I have a comment, Giuseppe. Just on the exterior work to make sure that somebody's monitoring the environmental conditions, temperature, moisture, so that the contractor has to be stopped when you reach certain environmental conditions to prevent the mainstream work to continue. So I'm, hopefully, hopefully somebody's monitoring this for the village.
We are monitoring, Mayor, they can't do any work because temperatures go up under forty.
Okay, thank you.
That has been Mark, then.
I have a question. Do you have an update on Maryland Avenue roadwork project with the connecting of the islands?
I can defer to Ralph on that. Trust me, I can deal with that.
Sir?
Yes, so the contractor ordered supplies when they were given their purchase order. The drainage rings are on site, just provided about 6:25 this evening. There are ten-foot drainage rings on the islands and they started excavating for the drainage structures. And they actually have the cut through closed because they have gravel and sand there. So a temporary closure is happening right now. They'll commence and they'll complete as soon as they can. The aiding portion, as I mentioned originally, would probably occur, will have to occur in spring because of temperatures. And I believe the bombard of the curb and those items can still occur now as long as the temperature's remaining.
Thank you.
Well, Ralph, I have a question if I could. I know you've had a busy, very busy couple of days, so I sent you an email requesting when we were going to get the list of the roads from 3TC that they were going to repair. I know John Veroni had prepared that, I'm thinking, back in March. And you reviewed and sent it over to them. Have you heard anything on that?
Trusty Chester, I don't know the exact date, but it was three-plus months ago, easily, probably four months ago he was giving that list. Has I responded to it? I want to saw your email again. I sent him another request this morning. Unfortunately, he was at a funeral in the city. We contacted Mr. Braun this afternoon. I don't believe that's happened. But we don't have an answer on that at this point.
Because I think we need to pursue that now. And again, like I said, I know you've had a really busy couple of days. I also was kind of puzzled when I saw the amount of money that 3TC was contributing towards this project. I think our understanding was that this project would go in conjunction with them repairing Main Avenue, of which I think I sent pictures out to the board. Has extensive damage and that's from the construction equipment that 3TC uses, which I think John Veroni would agree to. Why the smaller house? You know, we had the $50,000 for asphalt to another $160-something for the concrete work. $165 for concrete, $50,000 for asphalt. Wouldn't they have to give us a good amount more to properly repair the road?
So Trusty Chester, the estimate from Mr. Pascoff has not been vetted by our engineer. That was requested a couple of weeks ago, last week. It was re-requested again. Mr. Pascoff said he would contact Mr. Veroni. The asphalt portion of the roadway, no, we're doing nothing else up there, just repaving. The estimate's about $165. So $50,000 represents just under a third. So it's, can it be more? I don't know. We haven't closed the door on that. The $165 for the $160... I'm sorry, the asphalt is $168. The North Curb Line, the estimate was $165,541. As we recall back on 11/17 when we talked about this, the estimate at that time was $121. So that has been estimated higher based on the extra work that they pursued and completed. So we have modified these estimates. They have not changed since December 9th. When I put together this documentation and distributed it to the board and placed on the website. The Houston Road closing itself, with the drainage at all, is about $500,004.9109 and the incidental components are about $148. And the North Curb Line to the west, where are we going to bump it out in a southerly direction to increase the planting beds and the movement of that island to maintain the traveling? That's about $403,001.84. So most of the costs are associated with the closing of the island and the northern planting beds. The sidewalk is pretty much done by them. And the road paving is $168 with the N.S.C.A. credit $50,000 at this point. We don't have anything but these estimates at this point. So the only thing that's changed since 11/17 is we did receive an estimate from Pratt Brothers looking at the design and going down over the location. And they estimated the cost about 15.9% higher than our estimate, which was then, which was then a normal contingency, 15% to 20%. So I put the numbers I put out there, including 15, 15.8, and the 20%. That's where the numbers came from.
Okay. So the total for the asphalt work in total is what? I'm sorry, I have to say.
It's $168,166. That's based on the unit price. The thing we don't know, which Pratt doesn't know, we don't know, nobody knows, is the quantities. For instance, by moving the island, by doing a toko, which was $16,000, there was $6,000 in the estimate. There's an additional 10, the topography to make the drainage work. That means shaving or reducing the crown in the road. When you reduce the crown on the road, you're removing asphalt and you're probably scraping down to the, below the base, the subbase. So it's possible that change will require additional base repair quantities and then restoration of the final three inches of asphalt on top, the final coat. So these are, these are the estimates that go around. You can't prethink all that until it happens.
So you're satisfied that $168, using that number right now, the $30,000 that 3TC is offering as a credit deal is fair?
I haven't verified yet. It's the only number we have, so I placed it in the estimate because it's the only number I have. It's not until Mr. Veroni goes out there and walks the site. Now, I think Main Avenue was on that original list. We gave him three or four months ago.
Charles.
You know, they do have a baseline. They took photographs of all the roads. I believe that they were going to be working on or around. Mr. Veroni reviewed those roads based on how recent estimated by, I think it was the Royal Group, that just looked at our entire road system to help us, to help guide us toward which ones we want to put on our paving schedule for the future. So Mr. Veroni walked with that in mind and he looked at the roads, road conditions. There are some points over on Braxton, for instance, by the cow pasture. There is damage to the sidewalk and the catch basin there. We're aware of that. I pointed out verbally to Mr. Pascoff. They consider those punch list items. Not only do we want them repaired, we want them repaired with our supervision so we make sure it's done correctly.
When can we give them a punch list or when did they say they would accept it?
Well, they have their own punch list and we will participate in supplying our own items like that. You know, Mr. Veroni has a list and we'll make sure we communicate that to them. They're not, this project isn't due to end till April. I don't know if the punch list commences after that or if that's after the punch list is completed. So we still have some time to document what we feel are punch list items.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph.
Ralph, I have a question. Is Pratt Brothers giving you any final numbers? Any final accounting or invoices for the work?
No, they don't invoice till the work is done, sir. We can't, we don't.
Ultimately, it's already.
Although they gave us an estimate based on.
It says an estimate, but that's an estimate, that's not the final cost.
No, but all of our, every road we build in Garden City follows the same procedure. We put together an estimate based on quantities, linear fee. And then if we find unknown conditions, that, you know, because you can't, you can't core build the whole road. If we find unknown conditions, the final price reflects the quantity used. But we have inspections occur out there.
I understand the inspections and I understand what happens with the subbase too. And if the crown is modified, then you affect the subbase and then that becomes a different project, right? Costs more money.
The scope increases, the quantities increase, so the price reflects in it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Veroni, I like your coat. Hopefully your kids are sleeping through the night. But more importantly, the elevator at Maryland Avenue, are any of the four corners on village property or is it all on MTA property?
I'm not sure. I'm not familiar with that.
That's all right, because I looked at all the documentation, my old eyes with all the papers, I couldn't figure it out. So I figured I'd kick it into your, you know, Baileywood.
I haven't seen any orgs on that as well.
When the question came up today, I started searching through some emails, I forwarded to Mr. Pittsburgh and then involved me to the board. The documents I had that were communicated by the MTA or loan number or attorney back in two thousand twenty-one. And it shows about a thousand square feet of property where the elevator footings are. That was always discussed and presented to the village. I don't think it was ever the final solution about how we go forth, has ever been decided. Do we sell it? Do we use it?
But is it def, is the elevator on our properties? My real fundamental question.
I believe, I don't know if the entire thousand feet, square feet is, but there is a portion that is on our property.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Giuseppe. Thank you, Ralph.
If I may, just to follow up on that. Ralph and I were exchanging emails this afternoon and there was a letter from Mr. Hoffer, who was representing the MTA. And he was describing the fact that the MTA was looking to purchase a thousand square feet around the elevator. Again, we don't know if it's on, if the elevator is on that footprint or whether that's something that's surrounding the elevator. But I know that they were looking to purchase it and I know that in his email, he was talking about the fact that the MTA would incur all the expenses of surveying and any other expenses that would go with selling the property to them. It was, I had a conversation with Mr. Hoffer back in September. And at that time, the board was interested in having the thousand square feet staked out. He told me that they were going to do that, but I have no idea whether that was actually going.
Yeah, I don't think they ever did that, Bruce. And I never got, never got that back. The ball's definitely in their court. The reason I alerted the trustees to this was because a comment was made, what the appearance would be after the work. And I want to make sure that the, whatever the solution is, it's consistent with what that representation was. I mean, we want, when people look over in that area, to have a view that's attractive. And if that's just three or four bushes or trees on the front, on the south part of that parcel, that's fine with me. I just don't want it to end up looking like so many of the work sites of the MTA.
Trustee Torino made a good point this afternoon as well, which is if in fact the village property is part of where the elevator is, if the elevator shaft itself is on village property, he made a good point in saying that if there's any kind of accident involving the elevator, the village probably wants no part of ownership of that property and maybe drawn into a lawsuit if there's an accident involving the elevator. It's partly on village property.
Yeah, it's hard to be concerned, I think it's a good point, but it's hard to be concerned in the first instance about the emergence of potential liability to the village based on the threshold, which is the trespass of the Long Island Railroad on so much of the village property along Maryland Avenue. I had thought historically it was just the incidental trespass of the monster poles, some of them. But now it sounds like the elevator and the other portion, because the other portion is rather small. I measured that last week. It was just fourteen by thirty, I think. And that's all that the frontage is on the elevator between the stairway that comes up and the stairway that comes down. That's it. That's the rectangle, fourteen by twenty-eight. And that certainly is not a thousand square feet. So presumably they're talking about land under the elevator. Maybe we can get rid of that and clarify.
Point I raised earlier today was how in the world did they build an elevator on village property?
Well, it's a, it's a good question. I think it's a great question, but I tell you, I know trustee Torino always has great points, but I liked his point also, not in terms of trading or anything, but in terms of there's so much unused and abandoned MTA land around the village. And it's something I would think we'd want to get an inventory of and then decide, once we have that inventory, whether we wanted to do anything about that or address that fact. Because if they have land they're never going to use again, it might be useful for the village to get. That's something I think we would want to consider. And just in passing, I note that one of the things that Mr. Vassalati put in his email about this was this whole idea, and Giuseppe, you're there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. The, one of the things that Mr. Vassalati put in his email about this was to look at making some sidewalk improvements from the Seventh Street South parking lot, which to St. James Street South, which is that parking lot behind trustee Marciano's tollhouse. And the access to that is very strange and cumbersome from the stop signs on St. James Street South. But I think it's a frequently used pedestrian way through that parking lot. And it's something that I'd appreciate if in the future you could take a look at, just to see if there's any ideas of how that could be approached. Because if we had some ideas, maybe we could talk to the neighborhood there and see if they wanted to have a connection to the Seventh Street sidewalk. Because now when you come off St. James Street South, you just walk, I see all these people with drawers and they're just walking into a parking lot there. And if there's any way to address that or remedy to that, I'd love to hear about it. Thank you.
All right, good. We'll take a look at that. Trustee Kelly. Thanks.
Thank you, Ray. Do you have recreation commissioner?
Yes, he's on.
How's he doing?
Yes, mayor, I'm on.
Evening, Paul.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has one item on formal agenda tonight as I remember, the extension of the track bar concession agreement with B&amp;J Refreshments. This is the last extension that we can do with B&amp;J prior to going out for new RFP. This takes care of the concession areas at Community Park, at St. Paul's Fields, and more importantly, the Garden City Pool Track Bar, giving a call for a rental issue of twenty-six thousand dollars. And Village Council has approved this extension as to form. Other than that, we have a nice announcement. New Year's Eve, Saturday, December thirty-first, at One and Lot. Over in Fluid Hall, we'll be celebrating New Year's with class of productions and air presentation of Jack Frost. We'll be having music, games, a New Year's Eve countdown. It'll be five dollars per child. They're going to get noise makers, hats, and all kinds of fun stuff. We ask that folks register by calling the recreation main phone number, four six five four zero seven five. That's all I have this evening and I will do my best to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks so much, Paul. This is trustee Kelly. Thanks so much for arranging that children's New Year's Eve event.
Our pleasure. That's what we love to do.
Thank you, Paul. Have a good evening. Feel better.
Thanks. I am going to excuse myself.
Mr. Pittsburgh?
I have nothing on the agenda, although we do have a full plate of items that we're working on. We're looking at some contracts, one for the police department involving nine eleven services. We have two contracts that we're looking at and trying to put into final order, which is the security guards contract at the library and another contract for ACA Obamacare consulting services for the library. Actually, I think that's for the village. That's not for my work. We also have something, the historical society is being offered a fifty thousand dollar grant from New York State. And we've been, one condition of the grant is that both the historical society and the village, as the owner of the property, the historical society owns the building, the village owns the property, are being asked to sign a preservation covenant, which will ensure that the building is not disturbed for twenty years. Well, there's only a seven, there's only, I think, five or six or seven years left on the license agreement. We've been trying to connect up with the state to see how we might be able to accommodate the state under the current circumstances with the license to the historical society. Unfortunately, the person from the state who was supposed to contact me, I don't even know their name, but they had my name, was supposed to contact me and hasn't done so in the last several days. So hopefully we'll hear from them and then we'll see what direction the board may want to go in, go to, to try to help the historical society secure that grant. It might require that the license agreement be extended for some period of time to round out that twenty years. Thirteen years to be exact. Well, I think, yeah, maybe, maybe, may actually be more than that. I'm not sure how many years are left on the license agreement. I think it was renewed for seven years, but that was, may have been a year or two ago. So there may only be five years left or something like that on the license. So is it serious that the simplest way to do that is to renew it? Because we're never going to get any activity out of the state. And that would bring us into compliance. Agreed? That's correct. That would be a way to accomplish, yes. But it would be, you know, the license agreements have been ten or fifteen or twenty years at a time. The last award only renewed it for seven years. I believe we have a representative of the historical society that could apply on this issue.
Billy, President, Garden City Historical Society. The previous award, going back into the year two thousand seventeen and thereafter, we approached about renewing the lease, the license, the license agreement, not the lease. And they seemed only interested in a very short-term license, as if this property may become more interesting to, I don't know what. I don't want to speculate about that.
That was then, this is now?
This is now.
So have you...
If we had a license of twenty years or more, we have some confidence that the state would look upon this covenant differently. We had a twenty-year license in the past.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you would do with the land with a building on it, but it's just what it is.
So Karen, I have a question. So if the license agreement was made twenty years as it was done prior, does that give them an ability to get more grants?
To get more grants?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know what the circumstances were for this grant. But certainly this grant would, you know, would profit by that. Again, the other problem is a license agreement by its terms is terminable at will. So the state has to understand that as well and understand that if, for whatever reason, the village decided, even if it was a twenty-year license, if for any reason the village decided that it needed to terminate that license agreement within twenty years, that, you know, that would have to be understood by the state.
Sorry, what are the details of the grant that was received?
So this particular grant we applied for a number of years ago. It was actually an unfulfilled grant that was placed in two thousand fourteen?
Somewhere around there.
Two thousand fourteen. I believe.
Seven and a half.
Campania was still the state senator's, usually through the state senator's office. That was for a hundred thousand dollars. It was never processed or executed and the historical society never was the beneficiary of anything. We revived that negotiation through Senator Thomas's office. And he was eager to help us. In fact, he promised to get us, I believe, the whole amount. But then they determined we need to get a new grant and they determined it would be through the New York State Department of Parks. And at the eleventh hour in two thousand twenty-one, they told, at April first, it's usually the April first budget deadline for New York State, they told us we could get you fifty thousand now and that we would pursue an additional fifty thousand at another moment in time. The documentation on this grant application has to do with the restoration of the museum. That's the basis for the application. And we are, and will be required to provide documentation on how we have spent them, which is the work that we're doing on the external, exterior of the building. By completion will be at least a million dollars, would you say, Karen? We've already spent about five hundred thousand dollars since two thousand fifteen also. So the grant money is already being put to good use. It'll just be reimbursing us for the money we've already put out. That's the basis of the application. We do have the option to apply for grants through other agencies of New York State and we would pursue that almost certainly. State Senator Thomas's office has been pretty supportive.
Thank you, Paul. So yes, Karen, you had to do some more research and try to make some contacts.
Well, I've been dealing with Kate Schmidt, the other person. And she's been dealing with someone named, I think, Tricia Christian at the state. And they were supposed to be contacting me. I have no, I don't have a name. But I've been, I've had a couple of emails and this was Christian saying, somebody's going to contact me. I haven't heard from them yet. According to an ex-vest that just got from Kate, she indicated that the agreement we're talking about may be up in two thousand twenty-four. So... Right. It was a seven-year agreement at the time it was entered into and that was a few years ago. Seven-year last one.
It's a lot of time.
Any others, Karen?
Well, the last thing I had, well, two more things. I sent around our comments on the report of the governance committee. I hope everybody got that. Sir, I haven't gotten any feedback on that or any questions. And lastly, there are two Article seventy-eight proceedings pending to challenge star hearing officer decisions and I'm waiting to hear from the legal committee as to how they want to handle that. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? To move on, village magistrate Ralph Schumacher.
Good evening, mayor. Trustees, members of the... I have quite a few items, commander. The first is the transfer of funds that Ms. Broo alluded to, fifty thousand dollars to street lighting materials and supplies from contingent to fund purchases of solar items. This includes light poles, lumines, traffic, so on and so forth. Item C is three hundred thousand dollars for curvification from, to the contractual service from Water Administration to cover additional items related to light issues in term of phosphate treatment, for living copper rule compliance and purchase of work of phosphate supply in June two thousand twenty-three. These items appear later in the agenda. Item number nine, Board�ody, Board�ody's authorization is requested to transfer twenty-three thousand, three hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents from the library reserve for capital improvements to the library children's room, capital account to fund the installation of data boards. Board�ody's authorization is also requested to approve the proposed submitted by Intelltech Security Services to install data boards within the walls of the children's room of the library for a cost of twenty-three fifty-eight fifty-seven. Item ten, Garden City Library Children's Room renovation change orders for further construction. We're requesting to approve the change orders submitted by further construction. Change order number ten is for components for light fixture assembly at a cost of six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Change order number eleven is to replace rusted overhead pipes in workshop room at a cost of four thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars and four cents. Change order number 11 is to replace rusted overhead pipes in workshop room at a cost of $4,843.04. The funding is coming from the remaining contingency as part of the contract. It was usually $10,000, so it's $6,553.69, so it's reduced now by the 4.4%. The Village Mall HR renovation change orders from Inter Tech Solutions. This is the group that had one bid. We put this bid out twice and they came in with a little bit of $729. Unfortunately, in the design, there were four capital areas that left off, a file room, a bathroom in the HR area, and I think a bathroom or two over here, so these would put four more of the split units controls in those areas. It was an oversight design. That's a total of $35,483.88. Item number 12, purchase for equipment payloader. As the board knows, we're in budget process. One of the items we put in there is capital equipment for the current year and the expectation for four years out for a five-year plan. The payloader is the only unordered item on the list. It was estimated at $245. Now that they went to actually purchase it, it is, the price of $259.80, an increase of $14,988. Fortunately, we have $33,810 available on that fund because of the capital equipment removed on the summer first agenda. 13 smoke pyre wreaths, Pratt Brothers Inc. We're requesting to approve the proposal submitted by Pratt Brothers. There's no pyre wreaths or accordance with the contract. Mass technicality is competitively the contract. We use them if we have some heavy storms and all men can't get to it. We use them for the parking field like behind the old Lord Taylor, to move stuff and things like that. Number 14, this is a credit. We're requesting to approve the change order number one submitted to H2M for a credit amount of $119,304.28. The original contract amount was $1.3 million and the revised contract amount is $1,086.95. Item number 15, Board of Audit Authorization is requesting aspirate spend from fellow boss to complete the permanent construction of the OP tree in the Country Club Plant Wells number 1314 at a cost of $3,917,688. Some of the board members will be here earlier. We made this an emergency last year. The golf club had asked if the two-story structure could be reduced down to a low-profile building. We had just finished accommodating the Garden City Golf Club at the time. So I brought it to the board. We, at the time, we had to amend the bond resolution from $6.5 million to $8.5 million. It was approved. We had previously, okay, the excavation's $513,000 and this is the rest of the project. P-type project is charted in the backup, backup P-type project. Will be below the bonded amount. It's about $7.7,737,51. So it's about, about seven and a half, three quarters million dollars less than the bonded amount. Item number 16, Board Authorization is requesting to ratify the proposal submitted by H2M to provide professional engineering services to support the addition of interim orthophosphate treatment systems for the management of light service line corrosion control at the sixth entry point facility for a total of $4,800. We've talked about this in previous meetings. Item number 17, Board Authorization is requesting to ratify the proposal submitted by H2M to provide professional engineering services to perform work on a variety of issues addressed by the Village, including weekly status reports, the New York State, the fererals that we plan quarterly, the applying for the new structural grants for LSL inventory troubleshooting miscellaneous work. So the whole thing's $35,100. This carries us through the end of fiscal year into May of 2023. Item number 18, Board Authorization is requesting to ratify proposals submitted by H2M to perform work related to the living copper rule compliance sampling. That was directed by Mass Technical Department of Health and led monitoring for a fee of $248,000. This proposal also carries us to the mandates of 2022, 2023 fiscal year ending in May. As you may recall, the Village under the living copper rule felt government has to test red every three years because of the recent problem. We were testing, I think, 30 homes. Initial test back in '92 was 60 homes, but because we've been compliant for these years and from the first year forward, we can do 30 years, 30 homes. With the recent problems related to lit, health department has to go back to the original requirement of 60 homes. So this work involves identifying those homes, performing the test, reporting to the health department, et cetera. Item number 19 is the purchase of orthophosphates. Is approved the proposal submitted by Karu LLC to provide delivery of orthophosphate for the period of January 23rd to June 23rd as part of the corrosion control human proxy for post-epidemic 20764. So this is the 55-gallon drums that are used at the site. And I believe that this projection is based on the rate of use on the current use of the wells and the phosphate through gene. And item number 20 is Board of Audit Authorization is requesting to ratify the proposal submitted by Alkeen Plain Associates to prepare photo renderings that depict a widening to increase the overall road width from 30 feet to 35 feet on the eastbound, westbound trade lanes of Stewart Avenue from Franklin to Clayton Road. At along some of $2,500. I actually have patience to that. It's not something I have to decide tonight, but basically if you draw it down, Stewart Avenue, the lanes are not the same width. They're very tight and they are well below the state standard, which is more like 12 feet. This, what these renderings show is 11-foot, the connotations made from standard to accommodate that growth. We would cut into the mall about five feet on each end. So I wanted the board to see what their rendering would look like. We also have a one-foot edge on each side, which we reduce down maybe to six inches to preserve another foot of the mall. But that's, we don't make a decision now, but I'll circulate those renderings digitally. I have copies tonight if you want to see them. That's everything. Any questions? We'd have to answer.
I just had one question. Who would pay for the work after we looked at the rendering? On Stewart Avenue?
So we own, of course, Stewart Avenue between Philston and Clinton. We've already done, we've done the piece out of Village Hall about three, four years ago. So this section of Stewart Avenue, we talked about this during the budget process. We put design money into the budget this year and we put up $8 million. We didn't need that much. We're not finished designing, but LPNA designed the road for us. And rather than just repave it the way it is, you know, or mill and repave it with base repairs, this is an opportunity to meet the state duty standards. We're not bound to. It just might be a good idea. So the question is, what is the board's tolerance for that slight modification? Like we said, we're not in cybers now. It's a, it's a 2000, physically a 2023, 24 effort. We commenced with it in June and I'll send in the rendering. I separated the other day. So I printed them tonight, but it just, that's what it's for.
Ralph, just for reference, so you said this work was done here in Village Hall, right?
About three or four years ago.
And what was the cost of doing just this little piece?
Oh, I don't know. I don't remember the cost. This is four lanes. It's a short strip. It's four lanes. So from a lane mile perspective?
I would think just in terms of the widening, it doesn't matter, four lanes, two lanes versus three lanes. I'm just asking, we widened it, so, you know, on the ballpark, what would it cost to do this little piece?
Is this little piece out here? I don't recall. That was three, four years ago.
You'd be good to know that before we start talking about doing something that's probably five times the money, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure. This is, John, you have a distance estimate?
No, but we would definitely estimate it before we made any kind of decision, John.
Yeah. By the time the budget rolls around, we will have estimates based on the quantity of the unit prices. Again, the same way with the Maryland Avenue. We know how long the road is. We would have to move the drainage structures, not necessarily replace it, but we would have to move drainage structures there on the curves. So we would give you a pretty solid estimate based on the quantities, the width of the road, the lead footage of replacement on the curve on the inside mall.
So you can tell me if this is a nice to have, so.
So, you know, if we, if we don't, if we don't, and that also involves, by the way, the road design, because we're doing a roadway rebound by law, so we'll do all pedestrian byways. So all the ramps, the handicap accessible ramps would be created or improved to the substandard. We'd go about eight to 10 feet into the side roads, which we capture the crosswalks, go east and west as well. So it'll be nice and smooth and trip hazards are eliminated. And we'd replace any damaged curves. Of course, the sidewalks would be on the residence.
Now, you said work was done between Hilton and Franklin.
Yes.
And yet we still have that glitch that people have come to these meetings and complained about, which is when you were going west on Stewart and coming here, when you cross Franklin, there's like that sort of jutting sidewalk there. There's that problem for people who are in the right-hand lane. Do you recall that?
The road's not aligned properly?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do any real alignment. We just repaved the road and repaired.
Oh, so it wasn't widened?
No, we didn't widen this portion of Stewart.
Oh, all right, all right. And that answers it, because I wonder how it could have been widened and left with that slight problem that we've heard complaints about.
Yeah, when I traverse this road, that's something that couldn't have been looked at. But at the time, we did this road as a repaving job, but Stewart, I drive Stewart all the time, a lot, coming to and from work.
Right.
And it always bothers me at rush hour how tight everything is. It feels like there was some bumper car land. And I've talked to the commissioner about this too. I want his opinion on it. You know, when roads narrow, as you know from the traffic commission discussions, when roads narrow, it slows people down. It should slow people down. So there's no argument to leave it alone and just make them all leave the way it is.
Right, thinking the converse that we widen the roadway and people will feel comfortable going at higher speeds on Stewart between Franklin and Clinton.
And that's why I did the rendering. I want you to see what it does to the mall. You know, we have a cross-section too. I have it on the device if you want to see it, but if you might put it on screen. Come and see it now.
Oh, we can get copies, right?
Honestly, the digital copies, yes, digital copies.
Yeah, we can.
And I'll send you our copies. But once more time-
You can send us copies and we can take a look.
And during the budget process, when we talk about, specifically in DPW, this topic is very important because if the board doesn't agree to change it, I'm going to leave the way it is and just straight, you know, make it even.
Great.
Any other comments? Ralph, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Let's move on. Are there any sense of comments on agenda items? Please, if possible, you, say your name and address, please.
Good evening. Steven Levy, 139 Meadow Street. Item nine, I thought I heard Ralph say that the $23,000 for the library renovation is coming out of the Library Reserve. I think it's not, it's the Village Reserve?
No, it's from the Library Reserve. So I will explain. The budget that was, this project started a couple of years ago at $600,000. It has grown to include, it's now $1,298,624. That budget included all the money's put in by the Village. It includes $30,000 from friends of the library. And part of that number includes an approximately $71,000 Library Reserve that's been in place for close to 20 years. So it's all part of that number. When the, and there's still some outstanding items that had not been decided on, but the construction portion of the bid came in, I forget the exact number, it's over $800,000, $845 and change. When that project was bid out and it came in, it was awarded with the understanding that there are still some pieces at the end that may require some adjustments by the board and the board approved that project, understanding that this particular $24,000 item will round it up, if you will. When it was being designed by H2M, they were under the false impression that because Intelltech is on the state contract, that it didn't have to be put into the budget. So they left that out of the bid spec and it was actually left out of the, which is okay, because I want to tell the group that the budget amount wasn't put in there as well. So our Village funds are to clean it. So the Library Reserve Fund in support of that 1.1298624 number is being allocated to us with the Library Board's approval and hopefully with the Village Board's approval. These data ports are important for all the equipment to work. There's a strange oversight nonetheless that should have been in the original budget.
Yeah, so it's a little hard to understand. You're building all this steam, technical stuff and there's no data ports in the project.
Like I said, it was a design, this design issue was left out, thinking it was covered as if there were, they're not in-house support. They're just on the state contract. So the budget amount doesn't change the price of the project. It just requires funding that the library has that we don't have.
Yes. The other item, 20, on Stewart Avenue. That section of Stewart Avenue, I've never felt that I'm squeezed tight, but, you know, everyone has a different sized car. I generally drive a regular car, but sometimes drive an SUV as well. The lanes feeding into that on both the east and the west, there's two lanes that feed into three. I know I've mentioned, you know, why couldn't that become two lanes as well? So you have two lanes all the way through. Then it opens up to three going east, but two lanes feed on both sides. And then you could maybe have dedicated right turn lanes for Washington and the side streets as well, or something. Also, there's parking in the right lane, just as you make a right turn off of Franklin onto Stewart in front of 365. And I know there's been, I think, a request to the Traffic Commissioner, or there will be, from 364 Stewart to allow on-street parking there, which basically takes up the right lane in that section of Stewart. I don't, I don't see the need to take away the green space at the mall. I don't know if any trees would be affected.
No trees are affected.
But the trees then would be much closer to the roadway than they are now. I mean, it's a setback. If there's an accident, you're less likely to hit a tree when it's set back eight feet than hitting a tree if it's only two feet off the curb.
The trees are about 14 and a half to 15 feet back. So if we were to take five or even four feet off, they'd still be 10 or 11 feet back from the curb.
Okay. And I know there was some conversation about the fire training facility. It's not an agenda item. Should I save that for the end?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Agenda items, please.
Yes.
Please, come on.
Ryan Panola, 56 Kingsbury Road. Good evening, Mayor Vanzialli and trustees and board members, sorry, staff members. I strongly urge you not to waste any time or spend any of the Village's money considering widening Stewart Avenue under any conditions. That view down Stewart Avenue, whether you're going east or west, is iconic. It's what this village is primarily known for in addition to our St. Paul's School. It was designed by Charles Lever, who is a prominent landscape architect and engineer. His work is written up in all of the landscape and architectural journals. The proportions from the setbacks of the buildings to the sidewalks, to the trees, is what makes that so important. Cosmo, I'm sorry, Mr. Vanzialli, Mayor Vanzialli, as an architect, could explain it even further. That cannot be changed. And as Village Minister Schrader Swazi pointed out, it is not required. And as Trustee Kelly pointed out, it's only going to encourage cars to drive faster. So please, don't waste any time on this. It's only going to further erode the appearance of our village. We do not want to evolve into what I've been saying for years, which is any town USA. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment to Mr. Panola. I just want to boil in standard. In presenting the option to the board and to the residents, I'm performing due diligence. We've been on this road for 30 years. I want people to be aware that there's an opportunity to make it more drivable if you seek it, but I'm just as happy paving it the way it is.
Well, we have to evaluate the cost best, obviously, and I think Mr. Panola is a very good point. This is a major boulevard and why would you want to change it? You don't have to change it. So, and we can save some money, which is good too. Any other comments from the audience? This is on agenda items, please. Okay, anybody on Zoom?
No, nobody.
Anybody raising their hand?
Nobody.
Making gestures?
No, nobody.
Sure, let's continue. Let's continue. Trustee, the approval of the minutes of previous board trustees' bidding, my head of motion, approval of the minutes of the special bidding.
of November 30th, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
You have a second. Full favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting of December 1st, 2022?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Full of favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We want the consent call. Is there anyone who would like to remove that from the consent call for the discussion?
Number six.
And number 20? Number six. Number 20 for the discussion. Since you removed the item, trustee three, anyone speak about this?
It says agreement with Long Island Railroad, MTA with regard to Countrywide Press. I am absolutely clueless what would be the voting on. The question really is, what agreement, if any, do we have with the MTA or want to have? I would accept that there may be or want to be an understanding or census of the board of what should occur with the property. But the resolution as it is presently situated on the agenda, I don't understand.
There is no agreement, there's no agreement that I know of.
Yeah, I mean.
But it only intend that.
I believe that, first of all, A, I have no idea. I believe that part of the difficulty with item number six is the pressure that is existed by the MTA of needing to move along with a project at Countrywide Press. Trustee Merciano had reached out together with yourself to get a sense of the neighbors as to what, if anything, they wanted to do. If the agreement is to have the MTA move forward, take down the building, question is what else? Would they do? I don't know. So I can't, I just can't decide what number six is.
I just know that there are renderings. There are no drawings that have been presented for the village. Long Island Road wants to move forward on this, on their project. It's their station. This is, the village wants to do something, but we have to make an offer to them tomorrow.
I would be disinclined to adopting the process of implementing whatever changes with the Countrywide Press. Otherwise, we're going to wind up buying it and funding it.
My understanding is that we don't take it over. We don't have any control. So they will do whatever they want to do, which is determine to the Maulestein Station House and create a hardscape and then completely find ramps rising there.
When did we first know about their intentions here? Because it seemed like two and a big school's first idea.
Well, no, this goes back about three months ago when we first wrote it. I'm trying to follow up with them. They were not willing to give us information, such a precedent, what's going on here. And again, we were involved with Maryland Avenue with that, with Dead to Avenue and Cherry Valley. Then all of a sudden, I saw this on the radar, I said, well, what's happening with this project? And that's what they said. Well, they turned me down. And I said, well, why are you turning me down? Did anybody do any analysis? They were willing to give us any information. They don't even have drawings or specifications of what they do. I have no idea. Do you remember anything else?
My understanding. My understanding, Mayor, is that they have not gone after procuring yet and they don't have file design. The renderings were, I'm not sure who created the renderings and for what purpose. I don't think it was done just for us. Because they sent them within a day of asking for them. So that's the problem is that, you know, the people we're talking to are not the people who are trying to make a decision. So it's an unknown. The thing is that when we first learned about it, it was like inside, because we were talking about, I mentioned at the meeting Monday, if you were there, trustee Deacon, but we were talking about the historic marker under the Cherry Valley Trestle and saving that stone and what they do there. And then we, while we were there, Mr. Bellmer was there too at that time, like that.
Mr. Sam, was that right?
Mr. Sam, and he mentioned Countrywide Press. And we took a ride over there and, you know, it looks the same as it does right now. And he said, we have a plan. This is part of the plan, take it down. I think there's five, maybe six stations that have $4 million in federal funding to, I'm not sure what the purpose of it, but I'm not sure if all the projects are the same. So but this one in particular is to take it down and to put an ADA compliant ramp on the end. And they offered a picture of a plaza and a, like a large bus shelter type of protective area. I made inquiries since Monday, just March 10th, at everyone's request, asking, can we do without the plaza? And they said, that's feasible. It saves us money. This is the liaison, you know, these aren't decisions made from the room, but that's the indication I've gotten. I sent that email around to everyone. As far as the ramp, again, I've been told that the existing ramp that's in middle is out of compliance by about three inches. I don't know if they can tear that one down and place it. Or if this one, I've asked directly, does this ramp have been there? I asked it directly three times. I was told yes. So that's the only information I can offer to the residents and to the board. It's what I've been told. I don't know if it's subject to change or negotiation or analysis. If the plaza goes in and the ramp goes in, there'll be some sort of lighting. I think the ramp alone might be the minimum sort of lighting. We could probably shield that if they allow us to plant on the property. The plantings they're planning putting in are sort of like, you know, a short little bushes, you know, it's not decorative, it's not shielding. I'm sure if we could entice them to let us do something more, it'd be at our expense. I don't think it's a great expense. So that's kind of where we are.
So we weren't able to, isn't it, we're waiting here a decision for us tomorrow?
I asked, I asked that specifically at.
Essentially, they said, no, I'm moving. Exactly, no. I asked them several times about this.
I told the mayor, when I got in the room there about 7:15, I walked up to the mayor and said, the person I asked was getting on Subway New City. I said, can we have your sense? He said, no. Absolutely not. So listen, have you said that?
To.
You know, it's.
Trustee Chester?
To echo what trustee Deacon said, and yes, it seemed to come to light in the last two and a half weeks. And all of a sudden, under the gun, I don't particularly like that. That now they're saying, you know, you have to make a decision. This is what we're going to do, this ADA ramp. When did this all come about? Like all of a sudden now it's a ramp and everything else and it could be our expense. I don't particularly, Mr. Fisher, what is our, what can we do in this situation? I mean, they're kind of jamming this down our throat.
Well, I'd say it's their land. As far as I know, it's all their land and they have control over it. But I think somebody ought to reach out to the MTA, maybe the board take, take a vote tonight to, set up a meeting with the MTA and urge them to not take any action until they meet the representatives of the board. I don't know how we, if it's their land, I don't know what we might be able to do to stop them from working on their land.
You know, I like that idea. I feel like, I think we all kind of feel we're just being jammed down our throat. We're still looking at different options for the residents. And I think, I think that's a good solution, but I think it has to go up the chain. We're not hiding up in the chain here. We're dealing with one guy who can't make a decision. He's not the decision maker. And then the other guy's the supervisor. I'm just talking about that. So I think we have to get to the, the head secretary's name, to the president of the MTA. I think we should go out immediately that we, we're really not sure what you're planning on doing. And it's prohibiting us from making a proper decision and that the residents want to know more. And that's what we heard. So the meeting that Larry had set up, I just did some ballpark numbers. So 10 of them initially, 10 of the people who spoke out initially said, let's go with the MTA taking it over. And let's have them take the building down. And four people were saying, you know, let the village take it over. And then we had a few emails that came in, two letters in favor of kind of taking it down and four in favor of restoring it. So as the discussion progressed and the residents learned more, they mentioned that they thought that if the MTA was to do their thing, so to speak, and run with it and do the landscaping and take it down, they thought the village had control of what would be taking place. Once they found out that we don't have that control, a lot of them started saying, well, that worries us. How can we work this out? We're going to have more control over what they're going to do and at the same time have them pay for it. Am I representing that properly?
I feel like at the meeting we heard an overwhelming concern about lighting, about landscaping.
That's correct, yeah. They didn't want Maryland Avenue.
Reminiscent of the things we've had, you know, at the other station. I didn't hear, it seemed that most people were fine with the structure coming down. I also heard that people did not want a new structure put up there or a renovated structure. They did not want an indoor gathering place at the station. They want to keep the character of the station, which is a quiet, sleepy little station there. And that's how they'd like to keep it, which I, you know, I understand. I think that's what we want to work towards. I don't know, maybe tonight, I think the idea, seeing how, you know, the planting stuff has gone over at Maryland. I think engagement with residents is really important. Maybe Larry Merciano could head up a small group. I think it's a good idea to have trustee and residents who live in the area because no one up here lives in that exact precise area.
I do.
You're not in, I mean.
I'm two blocks from it.
Your only aside, Washington.
Your only aside, Washington.
Yeah, two blocks, yeah. So I use it.
Yeah, no, I mean, people use it. Larry uses it too. But we heard a lot from people who are within a block of it, who if they're, you know, are lights, they're going to be shining into their homes.
Yeah.
If they're gathering places, it's going to be, they'll be hearing that late at night. So I think that would be a good way to go to if Larry could start up, you know, a group to communicate with the MTA, Long Island Railroad and trying.
Disagreed for a moment, Senator White, because we've been having a lot of discussions myself, Ralph Swazi, with members of the Long Island Railroad, higher up the chain as well. And there'll be changes, and then the first is what I know. The personnel will be changed. So maybe we have a chance. I would reach out to someone higher up tomorrow. And we have to speak to the consultant tomorrow, right? That's the, that's the next step. And then we can say to him, this is what we want to do. He'll tell us, yes, we can go forward or I have to call somebody higher up in the chain. And then we get an answer. So if they're willing to entertain this idea, because it's their land, it's their project, it's their funding. Yes.
I believe that in place of number six, what I would suggest is a resolution of the sense of the board in which that we as a group communicate to the MTA advising that we have no objection to them removing the facility, the destruction, that it be in compliance with ADA standards. But we do have and request a concurrence and participation of the village with the MTA as to what would be the lighting as well as the floor that is to go there and that no ancillary structure be supplied. And that would convey to them what we want to do. And if we basically say, the board gives them what our sense is. And then obviously, as Mr. Swazi has said, if it saves them money, they should run with it.
Because my concern here, you said before, is a little bit scary. And Tom, to your comment.
I'm sorry.
No, no, and basically what Mayor said before, I mean, a couple of comments that came out of mine were crystal clear. Both of them there do not want to be affected. They do not want us to turn into Times Square. Okay, so that's number one. Number two, very closely, nobody there wants to keep the building for the building's sake. Okay, we can debate all we want about the historical value. I don't think anybody thinks there's anything historical about that place. Again, people may say it differently, but it's just a building that's been boarded up. And based on its location, it was fantastic in 1911. We've got the picture from 1919 that we've shown to everybody. That's awesome. I was there this morning. No one's going to use the thing. No one wants anything there. And my question to you, Ralph, which is concerning, is if the renderings that we've shown, the residents were aggravated, do not want a structure because it will attract the Long Island. So what you said before concerns me that we could theoretically go to them and say, we don't want a structure and they will put one up because they feel like it. Now, if that were to happen, okay, well, you basically, you basically said before that they will do what they want to do. And I think that the most broadest description is possible. So to trustee Torino's comment, right, we approve this, but under very strict controls about what happens and what doesn't. Because, I'm sorry, I'm a businessman. They're looking to offer whatever the number might be. The solution we are proposing is probably going to cut that number by two-thirds, okay? And unfortunately, it does look like there are two ramps required, which I think we will question because they are at Maryland Avenue, unfortunately. But I would question whether or not that's actually required, given the volume of people that go to Countrywide Press. And I walked up the ramp today. I would love to know how that's not ADA compliant. Because it sounds like to me personally, I'd like to know when the last time these folks were at Maryland Avenue because it seems a bit like they're making stuff up as they're going.
You can't just walk up a ramp and determine if it's ADA compliant. You have to take measurements. There's certain requirements from the ADA in terms of height, width, length. And every platform requires a different number of people, what we call means of egress or access. So you can't just walk up a ramp and say it's ADA compliant.
But the point I'm making, Cosmo, is that Garden City has one ramp, right? Both platforms, okay? So does Nassau Boulevard. Currently, Countrywide has one ramp. So I'm assuming that at some point in time, it was installed, so it's ADA compliant at some point in time. Now, Maryland Avenue is granted. Maryland Avenue has two beautiful ramps. There are much, much, much higher slopes than what we have at Countrywide Press. Because realize, Countrywide Press, we're only going down about two feet tops, right? Whereas Maryland Avenue is going down probably five plus feet, right? And it's much longer run than that.
My understanding is the definition of the project, if it's maintenance, they don't require to be ADA requirements because they maintain what they have. Once it becomes a corporation, which this is, we're moving the structure, creating a hardscape, then we're going to add a ramp. That's what I was told.
So that's my stand. I don't mean for my comments to be concerning. I'm just, I'm sorry. I don't mean for my comments to be concerning. My, my comments on the emails I've seen today is that once the, once the MTA, and I don't think they're there yet, but I don't think they're there yet because they haven't procured yet because I don't think they've designed yet. And I think it might be one big package, doing all five stations at once. So I don't know what's going on inside their organization. My concern is that once they start spending money in designing this thing and procuring it, and then we come along and say we'd like to change it, that they might just, we don't necessarily have the control we might want. I think, I think resolution as being property here makes sense because if we can reach up high enough to say, we'd like to talk about this and have more time, and I don't think they'd object to that. You know, we've actually formed a pretty good relationship since the Maryland Avenue thing has evolved. I mean, I called, this is the final day myself. I jumped over my two liaisons to see if it could help us. See if it could give you some guidance, if you can get a timeline for us. Because I was trying to address the emails I was receiving from trustees today. So I think there's an opportunity there, so.
I'm in agreement with trustee Torino's proposal on that resolution. I think that moves us forward and it's giving the notice read away as to what our concerns are and hopefully could lead to a positive working relationship.
One of the comments that I saw in an email was the source of the funding. And that did rise to what is a common problem with sometimes with federal funds, and that is you use it or lose it. And I think that's why we're getting pressure that we need to have an answer now. So if they know that they have. So if they know that they have to use the money, if it is subject to our sense of the board, they'll say, okay, we can use the money, but if they don't use all of it, they'll be fine with that.
If it keeps them from getting stuck with losing money that they weren't.
My experience with federal state money from my prior occupation, they will give you money to build a sidewalk that you'll land 747 on for the maintenance money. So their standards are pretty strict, and it's hard to walk away from. I think, and I think what I understand from the concerns about, like the ramp specifically, the ADA compliance, it is in fact a real thing, is that if they don't comply, they might not only lose money for, see, for Country Life Press, but the other five, four stations as well. So they will, my comment is that they will do what they have to do to comply with their standard, because the source of funding is the federal government, which is, you know, I've learned that from the federal government, it's a double-edged sword.
Well, I think if we went forward with that type of resolution, as trustee Torino suggested, we could also have on the ready Larry and, you know, a small group to have a dialogue and it seems like the right step, based on the input we've heard.
Yeah, one, one point of clarification, say, no one wants the building. I'm not advocating either way. A number of residents, two on Elm Street, asked to preserve the building. So I just want to, I don't want, I just, I just don't want to represent everybody.
Not you now, Mr.
Again, I'm not, I'm not advocating either way.
I think trustee Flanagan was talking about the general sense of the meeting, which did not touch upon, at least to my recollection, there were no discussions about preservation for historical value or any of that that went on at that 90-minute meeting on Monday. And we heard from people on Zoom and we heard from people in person. But I support trustee Torino's resolution. First, I wanted to thank trustee Flanagan and trustee Marciano for going around and getting a sense of the community and the Eastern Property Owners Association for gathering responses to a survey and presenting them at the meeting Monday night. I thought that was very helpful. But I would propose that we move along and just vote on trustee Torino's proposed resolution. And so I make that motion to support trustee Torino's resolution, beginning with administrator Swazi's phone call tomorrow.
Just one thing on the resolution, I'm not sure why we're referencing the ADA compliance in our resolution, but I think we will leave that out.
Because you know, you have a plot.
Right, we don't have to tell them to, you know, to the point of it.
Statutorily compliant, if you want to use that term.
We think they know what they have to do and just stick with the, they can proceed and with, you know, what our concerns are if you want to.
Are you looking to ask them to do something specific or looking to have them not do anything immediately and put this on hold until there's more input from the village?
We're, I think the, the point of this is to say it's okay with the demolition of the structure. We're agreeing to that. Our residents have these concerns, you know, X, Y, and Z, and we want to, you know, work closely with you to make sure.
They don't want a plaza, they don't want these bright lights, they certainly don't like a shelter. And all those don't wants, I would think would save the railroad a lot of money at Country Life and would help to maintain it as a simple sleepy station that had no gathering place for the neighborhood. And they see it as somewhat of a gathering place now, and they certainly don't want to make it a more attractive gathering place for young people in the neighborhood looking for something to do.
If you look on the MTA website, you'll see the executive leadership, which includes a guy named Jamie Torres Springer, who's the president of MTA Construction and Development. You may want to put him on the, on any contact list. And there's also somebody I noticed on here who's their chief of external affairs, is a title like that, which is the name that I've seen in some of the emails involving Maryland Station. It's a guy named John McCarthy.
He's an attorney in the village.
Okay, and he is, he is the chief of external relations, and I know he was on some of the emails representing the MTA on the.
Yeah, we've been talking to our fellow friend Hector Garcia, who's above Mr. FaZana, and then Mr. FaZana, I think he's FaZana. That's what I don't think right now. Above Mr. FaZana, I think we go to the president.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Mr. McCarthy was kind of in that sort of role when we were talking about Maryland Avenue.
But they're in charge of the projects.
The purpose of the resolution is to convey to the MTA that it is their project complete. However, it is likewise the village's request that it be included in the process to attend to the needs of the residents. And essentially, it is putting them on notice that you can't do anything you want to do. We're just trying to be a nice neighbor.
I think we're all agreeing on that.
Yep, maybe we include it that we don't want a structure and we have the lighting concerns. All right, do you want to?
Are there any comments in the audience?
I have a question.
Please, why don't you?
Sorry, sorry. I'm allowed to find yourself. Just listening to the conversation, I'm listening to the conversation, and I'm saying to myself, why don't we engage our assemblyman, why don't we engage our state senator against the MTA if that's the issue? We're doing this, you know, solely Garden City, but it's, it's got other components. They have a, maybe have a better or easier way of reaching in than we do.
Yeah, there is potential to speak to Senator Thomas.
Yeah.
You could do like that.
Do you take the resolution and present, take the resolution, present it to him as well? So just strikes me as the more people you engage on your behalf, maybe you get a little bit of resolve.
I think the lack of communication has to come through mouth. I mean, we are bad, we just can't stop making fun of them.
And make the observation that if your neighbor is playing music too loud, you go next door first and then call the police. So in this particular case, I believe that we should try the neighborly thing and go into them first and say, please do it this way before we resort to others.
I guess I'm just a little tainted by the past.
Thank you, thank you.
Can we have somebody on Zoom?
Everybody in the audience, raise your hand.
Yes, I'm on.
We'll be right with you, Julie. We have someone else. I apologize.
Thank you.
Sorry, Steve Maloney, 139 Meadow. As trustee Kelly referenced, the EPOA survey, which was sent out to the residents south of Stewart, from Grove to Franklin and Meadow, and we got about 173 responses, and two-thirds were not interested in keeping the building, and they preferred that the railroad paid for the removal. I, I did go over there that night, Monday night after the meeting, to look. The rendering they show, it makes the area look a lot bigger than it actually is. I went up on the platform and behind the building, between the tracks and the building, there's a sidewalk. And to the north of the building, there's steps and a sidewalk to get around the building when it was usable, that's boarded off with a lock. You know, if, if they needed to put an ADA compliant ramp, once the building was removed, they could zigzag it from where the building is now, so it's closest to the tracks, and then put plantings in front of it between the ramp and the road. And nobody was interested in the shelter that we got in contact with or heard from. Thank you.
Do you have, do you have any EPOA survey information?
We handed out.
I, I handed out, I handed out a package for all the trustees of the emails I received. I, I put them on a spreadsheet with yeses and nos, preserve versus demolish, and I, and the EPOA. I'm sorry? No, in the, in the EPOA, I did, I did cite the EPOA survey, and I put the number of yeses for no building and.
I think we had someone on Zoom as well.
Okay, well, I'm here. In the audience, too.
Brian Panola, 56 Kingsbury Road. I agree 100% with trustee Torino that the board should contact the MTA tomorrow, because if you don't, you know what's going to happen. However, you should not include demolition of the structure in your response. It's very important to listen to the residents that live near that structure, but this is a village-wide matter. Removing a historic structure affects the whole village. If, if there's a structure located by the town dump on Cherry Valley Avenue, or if there's a structure in a northeast corner of the village at the intersection of Clinton and Stewart and Obel Country Road in Garden City, that's important to the whole village. People have to remember that. Any structure that's removed from this village, if it's historic, is going to affect everybody's property values, it's going to affect the look and feel of the community. At last month's board meeting, I spoke of the historical significance of Double Day, trustee Marciano, and I don't see how anyone could dispute my findings that that building is of historical significance. At the very least, we should accept the structure. We can make the building for very little cost, I've discussed this with other people in the village, to at least make it watertight. We could probably get it to be a community project if we wanted to, because there are enough people who are interested in preservation, and it may cost the village anything. But to just restore the building, that nice sign there at one, one point said Country Life, that should be reinstalled, the residents, I don't see how they could oppose that. You have a beautiful structure. I want to hand this over to, to, I'm sorry, administrator Swazi, to distribute everywhere and to take a quick look. It appears that most of the people don't want the structure that the MTA Long Island Railroad had proposed. However, if you give them the opportunity, they may in fact construct that structure. The, basically, it's a cheap aluminum and glass structure. What I'm showing you here is two renderings. One of the original Far Rockaway Long Island Railroad Station, which looked kind of similar to Nassau Boulevard Station. And then I'm showing you today, December 15, 2022, what the Far Rockaway Long Island Railroad Station looks like. It occurred to me the other day, because I do a lot of work in Far Rockaway, when I saw that quote-unquote station, shelter, that they could do the same thing in our community. They've already done it in other areas on the Long Island branch, but that just occurred to me. I've said this numerous times, this is Garden City. This isn't any town USA. Do we want to be lumped into other communities where a structure like that replaces a beautiful historic structure? I don't think anybody would disagree with me on that point. Lastly, village attorney Fishburg was trying to discuss some possible responses we could have to the MTA. As administrator Swazi pointed out, this money is coming from the federal government. All we have to do is contact the New York State Shipour Office, the state historic preservation officer, and let them know what is being done here or being proposed, and they could start a Section 106 review. Anytime federal money is being used, the shipour office has to review if there's any adverse effects on the community, and that can slow this process down. So I think it's very important, as I said earlier, exclude the demolition part at least, but confirm with the, with the MTA Long Island Railroad that we do want the structure. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah to all of you.
Julie, go ahead.
Thank you. Mike Spengler, who lives at 14 Danson Street, sends a letter to the board, and it just, he asked me to read it. Do you have a copy of that letter?
Yes, yes.
The entire board has a copy?
Yeah, we just got it at our seats tonight.
It was part of the, just a beauty.
Do you want me to read the whole thing, or do you want me to read some of the parts that have not already been acknowledged tonight?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Okay, well, let me, let me start it. He says, happy holidays. So Mike lives at, Mike Spengler lives at 14 Danson Street, which is about five houses away from the structure in question. I, by the way, I live at 7 Danson Street, which is two houses away from the structure in question. Happy holidays, again, this is from Mike. Happy holidays to all GC residents and family. Monday evening, December 12th, I attended a resident meeting at the GC Senior Center to discuss the Country Life Press LIRR station restoration project. But I'd first like to thank village trustee Larry Marciano of the Eastern Section and Mary Flanagan of the Western Section for their attention to this matter. They stepped up door to door, ringing bells this past Sunday and Monday to save our community. Thank you for your efforts. We are a little community here at Country Life Press, a little bubble within a bubble, if you will. We love our little bubble. It is urgent that board focus and consider the following. Number one, the Long Island Railroad runs right through this residentially zoned neighborhood. There are no buffers in the station between the residential and commercial transient uses. The Long Island Railroad tracks are directly across from residential homes. Number two, the board trustees must make every effort to minimize the impact any renovations, demolitions, or upgrades will have on the area directly adjacent to the station. Those are the residents who are impacted the most. Number three, this is a unique geographic location. A survey should be taken of residents in a much smaller context than the entire EPOA survey, based on the geography of the area. Number four, there is no need for a plaza to replace the station house proposed by LIRR. Riders never waited that into the platform because the train stops over 200 feet away. Number five, the ridership at Country Life doesn't warrant an expansion of the station, remote working is here to stay. Of course, there are many more residents who are impacted by what happened at the Country Life Press LIRR stations, and they must be heard. However, no other residents are affected to the extent we are. He says, I, I have lived five houses away from the abandoned station house in question for 25 years. The area has been a source of vandalism and negative transient behavior for years. We are convinced if LIRR maintains control and does what they always do without resident control, this will exacerbate the problem. I feel horrible for the residents who live even closer than I do if this were to happen. I'm not a proponent of restoring the station house into something that doesn't make economic sense, burdening, burdening the village with the costs for something we don't want or need. I believe some simple cosmetic repairs to the property is prudent in improving the appearance of the area. That could include demolishing the station house by the village upon gaining control. Either way, landscaping of the surrounding property is needed to create a visual buffer from residential homes. No residents who were at the meeting Monday favor the LIRR proposal to demolish the station house and build a new plaza with ramps, benches, leaning shelters, and bright lighting. Any further commercial or transient uses would further decay the residential context we are working so hard to protect. I impress upon the boards to take control of the station house in whatever way possible so the residents can judge what happens in our neighborhoods, not the Long Island Railroad.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm sorry, yeah, just to, just to close it, I'm sorry, he signed it. Mike Spengler, AIA, New York State Registered Architect.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom?
Nobody, ask your hands up, no.
No one else?
We could.
I suppose we should, yeah, well, yeah.
We may want to just add a few things with those comments. I think they reiterated what we were thinking, but maybe in the resolution, trustee Torino, we want to include no new structures built, no plaza or unnecessary be the area be added. We pose any new light, or any new lighting should be controlled so as not to negatively impact the surrounding residential community and the area where the structure should be, we wish to have that replaced with robust landscaping to provide a buffer between the tracks and the residential community. to provide a buffer between the tracks and the residential community. Does that kind of cover what the main concerns were?
I'd rather have a simpler resolution where we just say, let's have a dialogue. Let's have a dialogue with the Long Island Railroad. Let's propose that and we can call tomorrow morning if Al Swazi will call or if he has to call to start the dialogue.
Right, and Ralph, you can have those points on hand.
He's so specific, I think it's dangerous.
Yeah, I mean, we want less than they're proposing. So we have a discussion that will save the money. I think we just tell them that exactly, because that's where we are. We don't want a lot of the things that are in that drawing and the neighborhood doesn't want it.
Nobody does. My problem with all of this stuff is you can't design words. You can't design something with words. Let's have the dialogue, let's discuss what our feelings are, then they'll tell us if they can accommodate us or not. As everyone said here, this federal funding evolved. They're on a timeline. Let's see if we can get to that timeline and help ourselves.
So I was at the meeting on Monday night, I heard these things firsthand. I've heard them again tonight. I've heard the residents speak. I understand the points you want me to make.
Thank you.
How about, you still need to have a resolution to work.
Well, you call it Bruce, because no one's doing it when I call Bruce. I want to have a vote to support the resolution. I made that motion. I make it again.
Second.
All in favor? How was the motion?
Do you want to reiterate so we have a clear?
Village administrative contact.
A dialogue, correct?
Village administrative contact the Long Island Railroad and MTA to have a dialogue regarding the demolition of the structure of the country.
No, no, no. Just have a dialogue, let's open up discussion, period.
Well, we have to, we have to have in the resolution that we're agreeable with the demolition of the structure.
Regarding the Country Life Press Station.
Yes, no, that's true.
That's, that's the point of this whole discussion.
They're going to tear it down, listen, they're going to tear it down. Long Island Railroad will tear down that structure no matter what. I'm saying let's keep it as open as possible so maybe we can figure something out here that's beneficial, not only to the local residents, but to the greater buildings in Garden City. Great, great.
In all honesty, Mr. Mayor, I liked my motion first time.
Yeah, let's go back to the first motion as much earlier.
Can you just reiterate so I can understand it?
Could you repeat it?
I have, well, what I wrote is a resolution of the board to have communication with the MTA Long Island Railroad advising that we have no objection to removing the structure, but we want compliance, ADA compliance. But trustee Flanagan said you wanted that out.
I don't think that's necessary.
No, it has to be statutory compliance.
Statutory compliance. With the MTA regarding lighting flora and no ancillary structure placed on the site. No plaza, no paved area, no lighting.
No, we get it too specific.
That's what you want.
That's too specific.
Why don't we go, do you want to?
Bruce, why don't you?
Do the resolution again.
Why don't you?
We have communication.
Now, we have communication.
Bruce, just reiterate what you think will work.
I think the easiest thing to do is to have a resolution that the village of Garden City does not intend to take over the station at Country Life Press. Accordingly, it is the resolution of the board that the structure at that location be removed, that it be made in compliance with all statutory laws, that there be de minimis lighting necessary for the, you know, like.
Too much detail.
We need the detail.
I think we want to get a discussion with them, right? And try to negotiate what we can.
And most importantly, there will be no ancillary structure constructed thereat. And most significantly, that the MTA Long Island Railroad communicate with the village with regard to what is proposed for that location.
Period, that's it. That's it.
Did I say that?
Karen, do you want to read it? Do you want to have just the last part that he said?
That we need the initial part.
Village of Garden City does not intend to take over the Country Life Press structure.
Station.
Station.
Why does it say that? Why doesn't it say to take over the proposed work at Country Life Press Station?
Proposed work.
And it is the resolution of the board that the structure be in compliance?
The structure be removed.
Removed.
In compliance with ADA.
And the, that.
No ancillary.
That the station be in compliance with applicable laws.
No?
No, 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 that's right. And you said before, ancillary structure.
And there be no ancillary structure. And that the MTA.
Communicate with the village with regard to.
Any proposed work to be done at that location.
I got communicate and cooperate. So if they got a nello of humor, they communicated and didn't cooperate. Karen, can you repeat that, please, Bruce? I'm sorry, I think Bruce nailed it this time, just one more time, just to. If you said cooperate, collaborate. Collaborate if you were.
Then I have no problem with that. It's a fine word.
Bruce isn't objecting to any input.
So Karen, put his call.
I'm just. Set for the removal of the structure. That's.
Communicate and collaborate, so they work with us.
I don't think we have to be that specific.
I mean, from the top, we do, yeah.
Let's hear one, Karen.
We'll communicate it right from the tape.
Go ahead, Karen.
Village of Garden City does not intend to take over the Country Life Press Station.
Wait, is that we?
No, Country Life.
Proposed work of the.
The proposed work at the Country Life.
Village of Garden City does not intend to take over the proposed work at Country Life Press Station.
At Country Life Press.
That's the first sentence.
It is the resolution of the board that the structure be removed in compliance with ADA.
And made in.
And made in compliance with application. Statutory.
Yes.
I've changed this so many times.
It has to be in compliance with the statute.
And no ancillary structure erected.
And no ancillary structure erected. The MTA will communicate and collaborate with the village with regard to any prop, any proposed work at that location.
That's it.
I'll second my own motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
Thank you, Bruce. Very patient of the editors. The only other thing was 20, right? The only other thing that was removed. I just don't want to spend any money on widening Stewart Avenue at this time. I'm happy to review any documents, historical documents that exist and take a look at them and send my views around to the rest of the board and the traffic commission. But I just think we should take 20 off and I move that 20 stay off the calendar. I move to defeat.
Trustee Kelly, the renderings.
20.
It's a ratification. I spent $2,500 in renderings and anticipate that we want to review it.
I just don't want to spend a penny tonight. I saw this and I want more information on it. And I just don't want to spend another penny on the idea of widening Stewart Avenue. I mean, I credit, in addition to the other reasons I don't want to widen, spoke about, I credit Mr. Penola's comment that it has a search appearance. And I don't want to detract from that appearance. And I don't think that's a small reason not to want to start widening Stewart Avenue. I think it's a beautiful median and a beautiful look. And I hadn't thought about it in that respect, but I appreciated that comment from him. And I just think that I don't want to vote for anything in relation to widening Stewart Avenue at this time. Let's, if you sent me the documents and you want to put it back on in January, I have no objection to that. But it's just, there's too many reasons not to widen Stewart Avenue. I understand we're just ratifying 2,500, but I don't want to do it tonight. And my motion is to take this off and defeat this, not ratify it tonight. That's my motion.
And that is, my question is, have we already incurred the expense? And is this here just to pay for the work that was done?
Yeah, under the village's procurement policy, under $5,000, I can secure this. But I want to bring it to the board's attention, so.
So what happens, as I understand it, this expenditure has already been allocated. The work has been performed. I agree with that no further work should be performed on this project. But yes, if they did the work, they should pay for it.
Well, my motion is not to ratify anything tonight. I want to see all the other documents that exist. I don't want another thing coming on another agenda that has to do with widening Stewart Avenue. I want to know everything else that's been approved before I was on the board and everything else that's in process with regard to widening Stewart Avenue. I would want to know this is the last $2,500 that I'm going to be boxed into approving. And I don't want to be boxed in tonight. And that, so my motion is to take this off, put it over to the January meeting and educate me on everything else that's been in process on widening Stewart Avenue, something I'm unfamiliar with, and I'm a trustee and I'm head of the traffic commission. And this is coming out of left field for me and I'm not going to vote to ratify it. And I ask the board to vote on my motion to put this over to the January meeting. I second.
The money's already been spent.
And we're going to talk about it again in January. All in favor?
Aye. You know.
Okay, making motion to approve the consensual as modified?
I'm second.
Second, I'm motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Let's go on to Nadja, please.
I wanted to just share something before we go to our citizens' comments. I just wanted to let everyone know we had an EAB meeting last night. Like to thank Elizabeth Bailey and Evelyn Cassano for putting together Gray Front Row Recycling. And we will be sharing some slides on the website. We'll also be sharing a video as part of the preparation. We spoke with Anthony Korn, who owns the recycling, the business we contract with for recycling. And I thought he shared a terrific video on the importance of recycling right, knowing what should go in the bin and what shouldn't go in the bin. And I think we all learned a lot last night. So we'll be sharing it on the website and hope you all take a look. And our next meeting is January 11th. For the EAB, we're going to bring back the youth-focused Round Eagle and Sustain. Good luck, which should be a nice night and everyone's welcome to attend.
Thank you. Nadja, please, everybody in the audience, please step up to the podium, state your name and address and serial number.
Sugar Pops, serial number, Infitterin, 301 Franklin. I'm going to be a broken record here, folks, but I'm hearing some scuttlebutt that the Cathedral might be making some plans. So I just urge you, urge you to take this very, very seriously. There's tons of stuff and unless I get something really firm, I won't come up again.
Please.
But I know you're tired, I'll be there.
No, but if you have information, please let us know.
Yeah, the scuttlebutt is that plans are being taken or being made. Stuff is happening. We need to be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Any other comments in the audience, please, for the podium, please state your name and address again.
Steve Maloney, 139 Meadow. To piggyback on Ed to be a broken record, I'm still going to mention the crossing at, the grade crossing at Cathedral, trying to get that fixed by the railroad. But the training facility for the fire department was mentioned that other communities would obviously use that as well. And I understand the benefit of everybody working together, training together and stuff like that. But are any other communities going to contribute to any portion of the building of that? I understand it's over maybe a million dollars to build that facility.
So at this time, the finalized costs have been compiled in regards to other departments contributing that hasn't been discussed. It's kind of a quid pro quo amongst departments. At the current moment, we've been utilizing Franklin Squares and several of the department's training sites, considering we don't have availability in any training site that we actually had in the village. It's currently unavailable to us. So they'll come to us, we'll come to them. It's just one of those where it benefits everybody. So we're going to cross train, we have to cross train. And as far as going to another department and asking them to contribute to something that we're predominantly getting utilized, but again, there are moments while they'll be here training with us that hasn't been discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments in the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Nadja? Alexina, make the motion to pause the meeting. Okay?